The regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee, Wednesday, June 11th at 6:00 PM. Call to order, please, Superintendent.
Rollie, Mrs. Cahill?
Oh, present.
Mr. Gattro.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Pertios.
Present.
Mayor Koch.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent in memoriam?
Thank you. Yes, we have three memoriam's tonight. If you could keep in your thoughts and prayers the following individuals and their families who recently passed away. Rain Chenette, she was the secretary in the Transportation Department and at Lincoln Hancock and North Quincy High Schools for 19 years. Next is Paul Phillips, former QEA president, English teacher at North Quincy High School and Central and Point Junior High School for 35 years. And lastly, Jack Buckley, social studies teacher at Central Junior High School for 36 years and Central Middle School and QEA president as well. Throughout his career, Mr. Buckley earned recognition for his contributions to the community, including the Ward Five Citizen of the Year Award and being nominated for the National Teachers Hall of Fame. His personnel file is filled with letters of appreciation from colleagues, students, and parents, a testament to his dedication to the teaching profession. Having been one of his students, I can actually testify to that myself, a fantastic teacher. If you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
At this time, we will have open forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community person may submit written statements to up to 300 words to the school committee at QSCopenforum@quinsypublicschools.com by 4:00 PM on the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements will be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to speak at open forum?
Hello, my name is Laura Moy, and I spoke here, I think, two months ago about the issue of fifth grade at Lincoln Hancock.
Can you, can your address?
Forty-one Silver Street.
Okay, thank you.
About the issue of fifth grade at Clifford Marshall and at Lincoln Hancock. I went back home and I was talking to my daughter about it, and she and one of her friends, as now almost 10th graders, wanted to come and talk about their view of this issue, so here they are.
Hi, my name is Madison Weyerson, and I live at forty-one Silver Street, and I'm a ninth grader at Quincy High School. I went to Clifford Marshall, and I went to Point, and then I went to Central, and because of that, I had to change schools three times. Middle school really is an entirely different setting from elementary schools. There's vapes, marijuana, bullying, and there's no way to keep fifth graders from that. Other fifth graders in the district are the top of their schools, while fifth graders at Clifford and Lincoln Hancock are surrounded by 14-year-olds with entirely different maturity levels. In my middle school experience, I was exposed to racist graffiti and kids smoking weed, and even as a sixth grader, it was a lot to deal with. So suffice it to say, it would have been even harder to do that as a fifth grader. One of my friends, who couldn't make it here today, also went to Clifford Marshall and went into middle school at fifth grade and was horribly bullied by eighth graders to the point where she changed school districts to Cambridge. As a fifth grader, she couldn't match the maturity levels of the eighth graders who could easily bully her. Simply put, fifth graders do not belong in the same schools as eighth graders.
Hi, my name is Aberry Chanda, I'm a ninth grader at Quincy High School. I went to Marymount, so I got to be in fifth grade, and I got to be in the elementary school building for my fifth grade year, but two of the 11 elementary schools here in Quincy, the fifth graders don't get to do that. So, they don't, they don't get to feel all these important experiences that all the fifth graders at these other nine elementary schools get to have. Like, for one, recess at all the elementary schools, they get to go on the playgrounds, and at the middle schools, they don't get to. And also, fifth graders, when they're in the elementary school buildings, they, they're like helping other students in lower grades who need them around the school because they know how the school works and they know everyone there. But when you're put into a new building and you don't know how anything goes, you don't feel that confidence and you feel really scared and nervous. And a lot of the students I've spoken to have told me that between fifth grade and sixth grade, they've, they got more mature and then, like how mature they were changed a lot, but fifth graders that have to go into middle schools are like forced to mature, like without getting the chance to do it themselves.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to get up and speak? Okay, great, thank you. Next on the agenda is Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you again. Good evening, everyone, hope everyone is doing well. Our first item on the agenda is student recognition. Thanks to Lincoln Hancock Community School alumnus Jason Siders, a recent Quincy High School graduate, for the beautiful outdoor classroom that was recently installed on the Granite Street side of the Lincoln Hancock Building as his Eagle Scout project. Fantastic job, Jason. Jason began his planning last summer and worked with the Lincoln Hancock PTC to help enhance the project. In the words of Principal Janet Loftus, who is joining us tonight to support Jason, it is an honor to have a former student return to give us this gift that will impact our entire community. So how about a round of applause for Jason. Jason, would you like to come to the microphone and say a few words?
As a scout, of course he would.
And when you, when you're done, we have a certificate for you. If you could come up and we can get a picture too, okay?
Of course, yeah. So, hello again, my name is Jason Siders. As has been stated before, doing this outdoor classroom over at the Lincoln Hancock Elementary School has been something that I've been personally looking forward to for such a long, long time. Not only as a scout, but also as I continue to grow through the Quincy Public Schools, I always wanted to give back to them. Teaching's been something that's been very near and dear to my heart, and it's something that I want to pursue in the future. And so, doing the outdoor classroom was really my first step since getting into the education field, really putting myself out there. And I can't thank you enough for having this opportunity to do it, to be able to show myself, and to be able to show other people how to teach the way I was taught, which is having those lifelong memories that last for an eternity and always coming back and always wanting to do more. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Want to recognize a scout leader, Jason?
Yes, I would also like to thank Ray Tebridge. He was a great help in putting together the Eagle Project itself. He was known as my Eagle, Eagle Project coach. He really helped me through the whole being able to communicate with everyone, having all the great connections, especially between multiple departments in the Quincy government, including parks and wrecks and public buildings. I'd also like to thank Kylie for also furthering those connections within the PTC at Lincoln Hancock.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you guys.
I just wanted to add, thank you very much to the school committee, thank you for the leadership, Mr. Mayor, we couldn't have done it without you. But I'm also pleased to announce that Jason actually had some residual funds from his fundraising, so he has a check for the PTC for $576 to help further the program at Lincoln Hancock. So, thank you.
So, Jason.
We're honored to give back, thank you.
That's excellent, thank you so much. Jason, the Quincy Public Schools presents a certificate of recognition to you, Jason Siders, for demonstrating qualities of leadership and service to the community and attaining the Eagle Scout rank. Amazing. Quincy Public Schools is proud of your outstanding achievements, congratulations. You want to come up for a picture? Okay, we have some staff, a staff recognition today as well. Oh, we have two, okay. Oh, yes, of course, we have two staff recognitions tonight. One, unfortunately, would not be able, could not join us, but I do want to recognize Kathy McDonald, kindergarten paraprofessional for an amazing 50 years. I know, unbelievable. Fifty years, starting at Great Hill in Atherton-How Elementary Schools, of course finishing at Atherton-How Elementary School. Mrs. McDonald was recently recognized by her family that the Atherton-How staff and Principal Marrera, Mayor Koch, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and I also intended to thank her for her many years of dedication to the over 1,000 children who she's cared for and nurtured along the first steps of their educational journey. Mrs. McDonald, of course, was not, unfortunately, was not unable, was unable to join us tonight, but is watching at home and will send, we will send her a certificate of appreciation to her home, but if we could have a round of applause for Kathy McDonald, McDonald's service. Congratulations, Kathy. Next, of course, is Mara Papil, Senior Director of Student Support Services. Tonight, we celebrate someone who's been a cornerstone of our district's mission to support, uplift, and empower every student, our esteemed colleague and friend, Mara Papil. It is both an honor and a challenge to put into words the profound impact Mara has had during her remarkable career here in the Quincy Public Schools. As a Senior Director of Student Support Services for grades K through 12, Mara has led with compassion, clarity, and unshakable commitment to the well-being of our students and families. Mara's journey has always been grounded in empathy. As a licensed independent clinical social worker, she brought not only a deep, all-professional expertise, but also a rare emotional intelligence that has touched everyone she's worked with, including students, staff, and families alike. Her ability to see the whole child, to listen deeply and to act decisively, has helped countless students feel seen, safe, and supported in moments when they needed it most, and we've seen that every day. Over the years, Mara has built and strengthened systems of care that go beyond compliance. They reflect her belief that every student deserves dignity, access, and the opportunity to thrive. Whether she was overseeing behavioral health initiatives, guiding crisis intervention responses, mentoring young professionals, or collaborating with administrators to ensure equity in education, Mara always brought a calm, steady hand and an open heart to every student and family she's engaged with. Her legacy is not just in the program she's built or the path she's helped shape, it's in the lives she's changed. The anxious kindergartner who found the courage to come to school because of Mara's efforts, or the struggling high schooler who stayed on track because someone like Mara believed in them. The parents who felt heard and supported during their toughest moments, Mara has been that someone for so many students and families. To her colleagues, Mara has been a mentor, a sounding board, a problem solver, and a source of strength. She has led by example, demonstrating every day that leadership rooted in humanity is not only possible, it's essential. As Mara steps into retirement, we know she won't stop making a difference because that's simply who she is, but we also hope this next chapter brings her rest, joy, and the freedom to enjoy the people and passions she's given so much to support in others. Mara, thank you for your service, your leadership, your unwavering compassion, and your incredible heart. You've left this district better than you found it, and your legacy will echo in the halls of our schools for years to come. Congratulations on your retirement, you've more than earned it. How about a round of applause for Mara? As I asked you to come up to say a few words, Mara, your work never ends, I know, but we do have, and she's right, working right up to the end, but I do want to tell everyone, especially this committee, that today Mara was informed that she has secured a $500,000 opioid trust grant to fund two clinicians over the next three years to do school and community-based interventions for students impacted by the opioid crisis, and how fitting it is that this grant was awarded to Mara and to the district today, and it's all based on your work. So you worked right up to the end, Mara, thank you.
I actually cried when we got that grant because a lot of the work that you do and Erin Perkins, Dr. Perkins does, you know, the most rewarding part is when we recover dropouts, kids that have been impacted by opioid abuse, whether they lost a parent, they're struggling with addiction themselves, there's just, it goes on and on, the impact of that crisis. So, I know the student support teams and the alternative ed, my husband Ray, you know, led the goals program, and a lot of those students may have been impacted one way or another, so I'm so happy that the district got that funding. It means a lot to me personally and professionally, and I know it does to all of you. I truly can't thank you all enough. It's been the greatest honor of my career to serve as the Director of Student Support Services in this incredible city and school district. As I retire from school community, the school community, I do so with deep gratitude and pride. To Mayor Koch, your leadership and unwavering support for our schools have left a lasting impact. You've helped make this city a place anyone would be proud to call home, and your commitment to education has been both generous and inspiring. To the school committee, your dedication to progress and equity has helped more to move this district forward in powerful ways. Your collaboration and advocacy has ensured that every student is given a meaningful path to success, and I've been proud to be part of that mission. To the superintendent and assistant superintendent, your leadership has not been, sorry, has been nothing short of exceptional. I've learned so much from your compassion and steadfast commitment to this community, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to have worked under your guidance. To my friends and colleagues on the Superintendent's Leadership Team, to our student support staff, and to the principals, assistant principals, you are the heart of what makes this district great. Thank you for welcoming me, allowing me to work alongside you in service to our students. To the families and students, it's been an honor to serve you, and I mean that. Thank you for your trust, your resilience, and your partnership over the years. I leave with a full heart and deep appreciation for all we've done together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a couple of comments. One to Catherine McDonald out there, Catherine, see you at the Flag Day Parade. You were always smiling, the kids saw a smiling face every time at work. Mara, had the opportunity, I know we talk about the Quincy Public School family, right? And that's true, but the more immediate family are those at the SLT and with the Superintendent and School Committee because we see you on a regular basis, whether it's in subcommittee or it's at the regular meetings. And certainly, Mara, you've been a big part of that inner family for a long time. And from my perspective, when I took office, I had to learn a lot. I continue to learn. I think when we stop learning, we should leave. But in reality, the opioid addiction crisis was really a difficult issue for many, it continues to be a challenge. But, you know, I thought, you know, I learned from you, working on that issue on behalf of the city, working with Men at Health and all of our folks in the health world, so many different people in the community were in silos. We brought everyone together and learned from each other to try to really move and make a difference. I'm more of a Lauren Orde guy, you're more of a compassion person, but coming together, we learned it's about prevention, it's about treatment, it's about education, and all those things combined to make it work. And I learned a lot from you, one about compassion, but two about how to tackle those issues, again, while treating people with dignity and respect. So, all the best, and after being at your retirement party, you may be a future as a stand-up comic. Good luck and God bless, Mara.
Congratulations again, Mara, best of luck. Next, as you know, we've celebrated 780 members of the Class of 2025 in graduation ceremonies earlier this week. Although the weather did not cooperate, the graduates were festive and the families were so proud. Thanks to Mayor Koch, the Quincy School Committee, and the City Council, the state legislative delegation, the high school staff and administrators for being a part of this important milestone for our students and their families. Thanks also, of course, to the Public Buildings Department, as well as all of our custodians, by the way, who were out wiping down the seats that were a little bit wet. Of course, we want to recognize our police department and their preparation and support for these events as well. Connected to graduation, we recently were notified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that once again, our four-year graduate, graduation rate of 89.4% and dropout rate of 0.7% are ranked second in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' 15 largest school districts. So that's, that's a really impressive number, again, second in the Commonwealth for the 15 largest school districts. So that's great. And again, thank you to everyone that made our graduations possible, and of course, this committee as well. Fly-up days are underway for students who'll be moving to new schools for September. Today and tomorrow, both high schools are scheduled to welcome the members of the Class of 2029, providing building tours and giving students an introduction to the administrators, guidance staff, deans, and teachers. Our middle schools have also hosted or will be hosting similar events in the last few days of school. Next, the City of Quincy events. In celebration of Quincy's 400th anniversary, the 74th Annual Flag Day event, events will be held on Saturday, June 14th, starting at 6:00 PM, with the parade beginning from the corner of Hancock Street and Hinden Parkway and proceeding down Hancock Street to Marymount Parkway and ending at Adams Field. The flag raising will follow at 8:00 PM at Pageant Field, and a spectacular fireworks display will be at 9:00 PM. The City of Quincy is hosting Kids Fest on Saturday, June 28th, from noon to 8:00 PM for kids of all ages, featuring music performances and a puppet show, science stations, and Lego robotics, virtual reality games, and much more, so hopefully you can attend that. And finally, very happy to report, congratulations to Atherton-How Grade Four student Haley Summers, who won the recent naming contest for one of the three new MBTA ferries. The new ferry will be crescent next week on June 17th, and the winning name will be revealed at that time, but I think you'll all be very happy with the winning name and very familiar with the winning name, but I'm not going to spoil it. Earlier this week, the entire Atherton-How Grade Four class had the chance to ride on the ferry and have a pizza party, so, again, congratulations to Summers and the entire Atherton-How school community. With that, that ends my Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Before we get into old business, we'd like Mara and your family, can you come up and get a photo taken with the school committee? Great. Okay, we'll move on to old business. First, we have the proposed revision to the Policy Book Section 911 grading system. Mr. Gattro?
Yeah, I just also want to give a shout out to Mara for her leadership during, during and after the COVID pandemic and the behavioral health issues related to that. I mean, I've been here for eight years, and you've been kind of a steady, respected, and comforting voice, I think, for both the school committee and QPS, so we'll miss you. Yeah. So we do have two items pending that are eligible for a vote. One is proposed revision of the Policy Book Section 911, its grading systems. We had discussion both during policy committee as well as at subsequent meetings, and it's eligible for a vote, so I will make a motion and ask for a second. Just on the grading one, start with that.
Roll call, vote. Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
Mayor Koch. Yes.
And we did, we had a discussion, and I think that, Mrs. Perkins, there might well be some modifications based on our subsequent discussion to the second item, which is proposed revision to Policy Book Section 10.6, middle and high school attendance.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins, Dr. Perkins.
Yes, so we did make some changes based on feedback. We also spoke with some of the parents as well, and so we got some feedback from parents. So you'll see that at the top part, the parts that are in bold are the things that we updated based on the feedback we received since the last time we presented. So we are going to be obviously updating the student handbook, and we are, we are going to be creating a very robust section of the webpage so that every single thing that a parent can possibly need, or a student can possibly need, that has to do with attendance, will be on that section of the webpage. And so you can see at the bottom, we did, I did, we did put a paragraph in right underneath there about the tiered supports, so what we wanted to make sure that we accomplish here is that our families and our students don't just think that, you know, we immediately jump to, necessarily to some of the things that are here. We do also have tiered supports that we use for attendance. We have Tier One supports, Tier Two supports, and Tier Three supports for our students who are most at risk. And so for more information on that, that will all be available on the Quincy Public Schools website, but we absolutely do, when we're addressing absenteeism, use a tiered system of support. We added the definitions underneath there, and we did, under Section A on the next page, we did change the language at the top to just say maintain full attendance. Under Section C, we added the types of, just to clarify, the types of doctor's notes, physician's assistant, or nurse practitioner, to make it clear. On Item G, we did clarify that students must be present in school for a full day or have a documented excused absence, and we did put the extracurricular activities in there and sports, so they wouldn't, students would not be able to participate in sports or extracurriculars if they're not in school for the full day. And we did, under H, we just added that if there's excessive dismissals, of course, we would also notify parents and guardians. And then, under the credit recovery options, we did, I did also just put that that would also be on the Quincy Public Schools website on the attendance page. We will have detailed information about the different types of credit recovery options for families that need that information. And then, under monitoring and attendance, we moved the information that was from the middle school section, which was feedback from the school committee last time. We moved the supports up to under, also under monitoring attendance and support at the high school, and so we added that section. We did, I did just tweak it to make it appropriate, obviously, for the high school level, but we put those supports up at the top, and then again, pretty much across the board, we continue to make reference to the Quincy Public Schools website. And for the middle school, we added, again, the definitions, the grade six to eight, and I think that might be, and then in the, in the end, again, we added the multi-tiered system of support and that all that information will be on the Quincy Public Schools website. And those were the changes.
Before I move for a vote, I don't know if there's any questions or comments. On the motion.
Thank you. Dr. Perkins, I just wanted to thank you for reaching out to the families through Citywide PTO. I know that Citywide gathered a bunch of concerns from families, and you had that conversation with them, and I very much appreciate that. I think every one of our policies, especially one that involves students and families, is made so much better when all the voices are heard, and I'm so appreciative that you included the teachers and the staff early on, and the parents, like I say, I think these clarifications. the teachers and the staff early on, and the parents. Like I say, I think these clarifications make it better and more clear. So I really appreciate you doing that extra work. And from Citywide's perspective, I heard from them that, they said 90% of the concerns that they brought to you were taken care of in this. So they were very happy. And they said many of the rest of the concerns will be addressed on the website to come. So they're really excited about that tab, as am I. And I'm very eager to see what that website page looks like, because, you know, the extra options for credit recovery, I think, really need to be clear. But I'm, you know, optimistic that that's going to be clear for families and students. And with that, I feel much better about this policy moving forward, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdios?
Yes.
Mayor Coe?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have new business, and the Manette Community Health update with Ms. Sierra and Mrs. Cassilius. Oh, yeah.
Happy to and honored to introduce to you tonight, of course, some familiar faces, Cynthia Sierra from Manette Community Health, and of course, Jane Cassilius, former nurse coordinator for the Quincy Public Schools, also now employed by Manette Community Health. As I had indicated to the committee some time ago, we have the ability, the potential to build a Manette clinic at Quincy High School to serve not only the students of Quincy High School and the staff of Quincy High School, but the students and staff of the entire Quincy Public Schools for all of their medical and other needs. There is a similar model that was done in Taunton, which is a huge success, which I know both Cynthia and Jane can discuss with you tonight. But it's an honor to welcome these two dedicated members of our community to the school committee tonight to review with you the potential plans for installing a Manette clinic at Quincy High School. So with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Cynthia and Jane. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Pleased to be here and privileged to be here with Mrs. Jane Cassilius. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your support of Manette. Thank you for your leadership and for all that you do. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Vice Chair Cahill, members of the school committee, thank you so much. Also wanted to recognize Manette's Board President and Quincy resident, Anita Christie, here with us this evening. And so we have a presentation for you. But I think first and foremost, also wanted to recognize Moore Papio and Andrea Huor, who have helped to get us here. The state delegation also that made a road trip to the Taunton Public Schools. And Superintendent John Cabral sends his best and knows that we're here this evening, and speaks of such friendship. So without further ado, my privilege, our board member, Jane Cassilius.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very, very happy to be here, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the promise and potential of an exciting project and partnership between Quincy Public Schools and Manette Community Health Center. It's also very nice to see my former colleagues here. I feel like I'm coming home a little bit. So just for those who may not know me, I'd like to begin by giving you a little bit of my background. I am a Quincy resident and have lived here in the city for 40-plus years. I don't know why I'm so nervous. My husband and I have raised three children, who are all graduates of Quincy Public Schools. Two of my five grandchildren now are also enrolled in the Quincy Public Schools. I have been a nurse for 50-plus years, and I really don't know how that happened. My focus area of practice has always been community health nursing. I became a school nurse in Quincy in 1993 and worked for 10 years at the Delicazza Early Childhood Center. I absolutely loved working directly with students, parents, staff, primary care providers, to identify and advocate for student health needs. In 2003, I became the Coordinator of Health Services, working for 11 years as a nurse leader for the district. I worked with the great nursing staff and administrative team that provided ongoing support to meet the needs of our program. Throughout my 21 years at Quincy Public Schools, I have also worked closely with Manette Community Health Center, both as a school nurse and an administrator. Manette has provided and continues to offer ongoing support to the health services team and school community in the city of Quincy at large. One small example of this is the establishment of the Citywide Immunization Clinic that was created during the COVID pandemic. In 2020, I had the privilege of joining the Board of Manette. For me, it's an opportunity to give back to an agency that supported me greatly throughout my QPS nursing career, and more importantly, whose mission is to provide quality, comprehensive health care to all. It's been amazing to be a part of Manette and witness the growth in programs and services for our communities. I am here as a board member to strongly advocate for establishing a school-based health center within Quincy Public Schools at Quincy High School. As a former school nurse, the value of having direct and immediate access to health care for students and staff is invaluable. The ability to respond quickly to return to routine, sorry, health problems reduces missing class time, can improve attendance, and academic success. A full array of comprehensive health services are available within, are available, which include primary health care, chronic disease management, such as asthma and diabetes, just to name a few, mental health counseling, huge, and preventative care. School-based health centers are cost-effective by addressing issues early and reducing emergency room visits. Parents are able to take less days off from work for medical appointments. The school-based health center would provide health access to families who, or does provide health access to families who are new to the area and not connected to health services. The benefits of a school-based health center are many, and I could go on and on. But I am now going to turn this over to Cynthia, who will further expand on the benefits in our upcoming slides. And in just in conclusion, I ask and hope that you will join me in supporting this valuable partnership, which will improve health outcomes for our students, families, and staff. Thank you.
So just to expand upon what Jane shared, Manette, of course, for, since 1979, here, our start in the City of Quincy in Howsonak opened because of the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program in the City of Quincy, and concerned and mobilized community residents. I think as a federally qualified health center, we have an exceptional mayor, and that partnership is invaluable to who we are, who we've been, and who we're going to be. A hallmark of a federally qualified health center, Jane is one of many board members, and it's important for a federally qualified community health center, such as Manette, to be governed and led by patients of the health center. And also, our growth, it's important to share that Manette has been able to grow and grow well, and we're now serving just under 29,000 individual, unduplicated, and unique patients. And as Jane mentioned, providing primary care, which is, if you will, the core of the healthcare system, but also integrated with services such as mental health, substance use counseling, enabling services, navigation, radiology, specialty care. And so, for your review, who we are and what we do, let me just say how important it is for us at Manette and for the patients that we serve, that are the inspiration of what we do every day, that we hold these accreditations. And so we are joint commission accredited. We are accredited by the College of Radiology. Thank you to the City of Quincy, the Community Development Block Grant Program. The community of Quincy has access to plain film, x-ray, and radiology. And thank you, Mayor, and the City of Quincy Planning Department for helping make that possible. And also, our diabetes program, and Jane referenced diabetes, and one of the top diseases and conditions, if you will, in our service area, and certainly for our patient population. And know that when you're seen at Manette, it's an accredited program, and staff that are board-certified and licensed to be able to see you, too. Jane's point, and Mara, and Erin, and Superintendent Malvi, and Andrea, we are already here. We are not only the City of Quincy's physician advisor, we are also the Quincy Public Schools physician advisor, and we have been, without interruption, for decades. As well, we also are the physician advisors for Quincy Cath Academy. We support welcoming new students, physicals, immunizations here in the City of Quincy. We're pleased to be able to support new employees, prospective employees of the Quincy Public Schools. And we have an active vision partnership, supported by our Vision Center, our Excellence Masterclass in Vision Providers, led by Dr. Jean Hopkins, and our Quincy Lions as well, and our present president, Sean Glennon, and being able to, if you will, give better and more effective sight for your students. And just a quick review, know that we're here in Quincy, we're also in Hull, and we've grown to Taunton and also in Attleboro. What's of importance for us tonight is to speak a little bit about the Taunton Public Schools, which has a student population of just over 8,000. About 2,500 are their high school students, and they have 12 distinct schools, school-based health centers, and was, you know, really moved by the presentation to Laura, Superintendent, and, if you will, that juxtaposition of health and education. And so, to Jane's point, and we've had a wonderful experience in Taunton with both pleased patients, pleased parents and caretakers, and a very pleased student community. When you integrate primary care, same-day care by a nurse practitioner, and you also couple that with more appeals credential in LICSW, really wonderful things can happen to help take care of the students in that school day, and to help booster attendance, keep students in school, and also create more engagement around health careers, health opportunities. The staff become part of the fabric of the school, and they themselves serve as mentors and have mentees. And so, and here also, for your review, a bit more about what those benefits and opportunities are, and truly reduces barriers to both health care and supportive services. Working in partnership, not, if you will, outside of or against, working hand-in-hand tandem with school nurses, school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, school administrators, supporting, again, new arrivals, new members, and welcoming them into the community for athletes, for faculty, for staff, and really working in partnership with present providers. So whether they be pediatricians, they be family medicine providers, they be counselors, they be psychologists, it is a collaboration. Manette is collaborating in these models, which lead to such great results. So the next slide has a little bit about our Taunton Public Schools, which just opened in December of 2023. All of our sites are licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We had what was expected in an unannounced visit the end of March. All eight of our locations did exceptionally well. And as a federally qualified health center, we have what would be the equivalent of 100% in terms of compliance and how we deliver our service, and our commitment to patient safety and quality. Note the link on the bottom of the slide. This is important, and this is right from our website. These are our enrollment forms, or otherwise known as consent forms, because the work that our providers do inside of Manette at the Taunton Public Schools, or any other prospective school-based health center opportunity, there is the engagement, there is the partnership, there is the leaning in for parents and caretakers. The feedback that our staff receives at the Taunton Public Schools, and here is the staffing composition. So every school-based health center, ideally, there are planning groups, both from the health entity, that would be Manette, and the public school system. And together, we create that charter and that program of work, and who we're going to be, the programs we're going to offer, the hours of operation, when the health center is, if you will, starting up. And each school-based health center would have a minimum of one primary care provider that would be there, all hours at school, is opening. Also, for Manette, really important to think about what we call primary care plus. So that's a full-time commitment to making sure that there's mental health support services as well, that are working, again, with school psychologists, with school guidance counselors and adjustment counselors, and then also a medical assistant, because when you're seeing the younger age, if you will, there's a need for some medical assistance support for a primary care provider. And then also, community health specialists that really help to address the interfacing of some of the social variables, or what we call social health, in the lives of your students and our patients. Know that school-based health centers, although they may be limited and seasonal in hours of operation, but they need not be. They could be open summers, they could be open school vacations. Registered patients of the health center do have access to 24-hour call services. And then for Taunton, as an example, where some of the programming at the Manette Taunton Public Schools may end, our other locations are within miles. And there's a whole bevy of providers and services that are also open evenings and weekends as well. And so, we just wanted to end with such appreciation and gratitude for the opportunity to just share a little bit about a school-based health center model, and very joyful and enthusiastic, knowing that the work that we've done in partnership with the Taunton Public Schools has resulted in healthier students, but also a really pleased, if you will, staff and parents and caretakers that say, you know, thank goodness that you're here. And so, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're great. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, ladies. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Hold you both in high regard. Appreciate what Manette does in our community. Appreciate you and all your service, both in the school system, but also now with Manette. Just a few basic questions, and then maybe a couple more complicated ones. Does the kid come down and go to the nurse's office first, get cleared, to then go to Manette? Andrea, is that how it's going to work?
Do you want to come over? Yeah, so when I visited at the Taunton Schools, that's pretty much how it works, is, you know, if the kids need to be seen that day, they're going to be checking in with the school nurse, and the school nurse is going to do an assessment and decide at that point, we might need more services than what we can provide in the school, and then we can reach out to the providers at the school-based health clinic.
I guess what I am familiar with, if somebody has an issue, right, the parent gets a call.
Yes.
So at what point is the parent or guardian contacted during this process?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to speak to that. And that's part of the planning committee work, so that we, there's no ambiguity, and we understand, if you will. Andrea is absolutely right, and thank you for coming and traveling and meeting the team from both the school and from Manette, that staff, the school-based. Yes, yes, parents are notified. If, as an example, there's a child that comes down, they are acutely symptomatic, the nurse would really like the nurse practitioner at Manette to see the student. That is, if you will, one point of entry. Perhaps for that particular family, that particular parent... Perhaps for that particular family, that particular parent, they really would like to have some more ongoing, if you will, health maintenance. As an example, if a student has asthma, if a student has diabetes. And so the parents are fully engaged, fully informed, Mayor, in the same way that the pediatrician or the family medicine provider would be as well. So our nurse practitioner would not do the work that she does in a vacuum. There's the outreach, of course, circling back to the nursing professionals inside of the facility, also the parents, the family. But again, if there's already a registered provider in the life of that child, that outreach and care coordination is.
So the fake is the kids that want to get out of class, you won't recommend them. The nurses know who they're dealing with.
Yes, yes.
So then they get to you. Do they have to be signed up ahead of time? In other words, if you treat somebody for something, whatever it may be, there's a cost to that. Is, who's billed for that?
Excellent question.
And is the liability incurred by Manette Health?
Yes. So, and the enrollment forms are really, really important. And if there's a possibility and a way to get those completed, as an example, tomorrow night, we'll be at an open house for the Taunton Public Schools, and our staff will be there. We'll work to reintroduce ourselves and to educate parents and hopefully have some enrollment forms. So part of what we do is, if you will, health benefits counseling. And we offer that here in all of our sites for families and for patients that may not have health coverage, if you will. And our responsibility is to make sure that we're offering to anyone that needs us health benefits counseling, not just because support for, if you will, Manette services, but health benefits coverage, if you will, health insurance is so important for the families that we see in the students, because there could be pharmacy costs, they could need to go to a hospital or an acute care site for imaging. There's a plethora of specialty access that one might need. So it's actually our obligation to make sure that we're connecting them with health benefits counseling. That being said, Mayor Koch, as a federally qualified health center and as a grantee with Health Resources and Services Administration, there is not a patient that we would turn away. But again, what we would do is do everything that we could if there wasn't access to health coverage, to be able to wrap the family around a coverage program. I hope that answers the question.
I'm a little slow. So if a kid, does the kid have to be enrolled ahead of time to get services from there?
So, yes, yes.
Yes, okay. So if a kid comes down and is not enrolled, but is having an issue, you'll still treat them?
Oh, okay. So, and actually, if they can come and see us, and if they are not enrolled in a health coverage plan, we need the consent from the parent or the family if they're a minor child. We can complete the application.
Most of them are going to be minors.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes. There's some student population that are 18, 19, and we will do the health benefits coverage, and we will not withhold that care, right? But we absolutely need the enrollment form, the registration form, to be able to see them, that we've had that engagement with the family before we're serving them. But yes, walk-ins are welcome. Again, the traditional path is through the nurse's office.
I know one of the issues too with nurses is that kids come down, the dedicated students, that the parents don't want them to miss a day, they came in with the flu, they came in with COVID, we like to get them out of the building. Will that change?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll yield to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. I first want to thank Manette for all they do for not only your patients in Quincy, but the Quincy community. You know, just kind of personally on the Clifford Marshall Point Webster Fund Run, we've done that for eight years now, we just finished our eighth year, and Manette's been part of that, you know, offering blood pressure screenings and COVID vaccines back a few years ago every year. So I just, you know, you're very involved in the community and always trying to partner and get more services for families, and I appreciate that so much, so thank you for that. So I want to start with that. And then, so I also have some questions similar to Mayor Koch. Kido comes down to the nurse's office, and I'm probably slower than he is. You suspect maybe they have strep, right? So if they do not have an enrollment form with you, what happens? Does the school nurse call the parent and say, would you prefer to come pick your child up? Or do you want them to go to Manette? Is that how that call goes?
Yes.
Okay. So they are notified. So, all right, so I'm assuming, and I can't quite picture it yet, but if the clinic's there, they'd have to leave the high school to get to your clinic. Is that correct? They'd have to sort of be dismissed from the high school to get, they have to leave the building to get to you?
So we are, in Taunton, we're located in the bridge between a middle school and a high school, and it's contiguous, right? So we're right in the heart of the middle school. And the strep is actually a really good example, because sometimes we are seeing children that have strep because we have the diagnostic, if you will, equipment and supplies to sort of, within just a few minutes, if you will, make that diagnosis. So in many circumstances, the kids could be dismissed to come over to the health clinic, and others there, if you will, there's an escort, and they could be brought right down, and then they're returned right to class. And sometimes they are dismissed, they are deemed that they do need to go home and be taken care of at home.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to figure out the path of how do we make sure that they have left the school building, they arrive at the health center, and then if they're deemed okay enough to go back to school, then they come back in. And is there just some kind of, what does that path look like? Would it be counted as an absence while they're gone, kind of?
Well, I can touch, the plans for the building are for the actual clinic to be in building, so they wouldn't have to leave the building and go outside. There would be a door connected to the clinic. And of course, a student wouldn't be permitted to go in there without the clearance of the school nurse, first of all.
Okay. And then I'm assuming there's also an external door, and are you seeing families that aren't just Quincy High students as well during that time?
It's an excellent question. There's an external door and there's an internal door, and we have the ability to see families. As an example, you walk into Manette at Taunton Public Schools, there's an infant scale, there's the ability to take care of the youngest of children that aren't yet, if you will, age-eligible to be enrolled in the schools. Those are really the decisions that we would make together. The health center would not presume, if you will, a program of work. Traditionally, there'd be planning committees that are coming together. So the superintendent, as an example, would appoint as many, but usually, you know, five to 10 members of his team. And Manette, likewise, we would do the same. And this planning committee would sort through all sorts of issues, entrances, exits, hours of operation, security consent, internal communication, external communication, messaging, parent engagement, if you will, student advisory board engagement. And so it feels, it's hard for me to answer all those questions because I frankly come with humility, that I, it's, in essence, the partnership, if you will, the planning phase would help, I think, come to resolution, and some of those answers that are unique for the Quincy Public Schools.
Sure, no, I appreciate that answer. And I just would share my kind of concern about just making sure that the security between people coming in from outside and now they're not going through security to get into part of the building. So just that, so just when you're having, I'm sure that team will look at that, but that would be a piece that I'd be really concerned about.
The external entrance would be a totally separate entrance from where students come and go to get into the building.
Right, but there's a door connecting, yeah. So just who's manning that and who's sort of, kind of making sure no one's coming into the building.
So it would be, you know, a locked, again, a locked entrance, completely separate, where they're not having access to all the students in the school.
Okay, so definitely that. And then my last question is just, so who would fund, so the mayor, I think, asked this as well, sort of, that who would fund, I think his question was more who would fund the services, but who would fund the positions of the people what would be working there? Is that Manette? Is that QPS? Does QPS have any financial obligation for this?
Appreciate the question. They would be employees of the health center, so the provider would be board-certified, a family practitioner, so the ability to provide primary care, medical care for all ages, also a licensed independent clinical social worker. And yes, the staffing would be employed by the health center and would be the responsibility, if you will, of the health center. And they would, if you will, assimilate into our clinical team and be part of Team Manette. And again, that is our responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So no QPS kind of funding really necessary for this?
No.
I'd love hearing that.
No.
Thanks to the mayor and of course, the Community Block Development Grant administrators, it would be that block development grant that would fund the actual building out of Manette. So there's that funding, which is separate from Manette's funding. So the Community Block Development Grant would help fund the build-out of the facility, which would include security, as you had mentioned, buzzing in, buzzing out from the Manette side. They would authorize who comes in and who goes out through a buzzing system, and there'll be security cameras and other security systems as part of that build-out. But, so that would be paid for through that grant. And as Cynthia said, Manette will cover the employee.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Yes.
And just last question, where would it be physically?
So right now, we're looking at the, if you're looking at Quincy High School, the classrooms, the two classrooms closest to the back door, closest to the YMCA. So the idea would be, so on the principal's side of the building, all the way down, the last two classrooms that go, that.
Next to the parking lot?
Next to the parking lot. And the reason for that is, there's a parking lot there. Those two classrooms will be the right size to build out the clinic needs, and we have the basis for that through what they did down in Taunton, which is great. But also, it will be T-accessible as well.
Gotcha.
Which is important. And anticipation of that, and the mayor's foresight, Paul Heinz's foresight, when they had the street dug up, they put in a separate saw line with the anticipation that the Manette Clinic would be going in there, so they'll have their own dedicated saw line, which is also easily accessible off of Carrington. So that's the other reason for that location as well.
Fantastic, thank you. Thanks for all the time.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Just quick, will our students in the CNA program be able to have any type of internship here at all? Or do you see any type of ability to have any type of collaboration with our CNA program?
I actually think yes, but I also think it could even start sooner than that, yes, with other locations that we have in Manette. Wonderful conversation for us to be able to have, but for sure, Manette, the Taunton Public Schools, really part of that aim is to, if you will, foster the development, particularly in health professions, for students, yes.
I think that would be absolutely wonderful, being so close to our.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you so much. I would love to see that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent, for explaining about the Community Development Block, because that was my first question. My other question. But that's one of them. My other question was, so are most of your clients mass health clients?
If we're looking at total payer mix for Manette, we have about 32% of our patients, if you will, are commercially insured. And the other pockets are both Medicare population and then Medicaid, yes, and different products within Medicaid.
So I worry about the continued funding on Medicaid. So I mean, I worry about that. I guess we can't put our, we can't put our dreams on hold because we don't know what's going to happen, but I do worry about that greatly, the people losing their healthcare, and your responsibility for covering that increases so much. But I have a question for you. So if I have, if I'm a parent and I have a pediatrician that I usually see, and something happens to my student in school, and the nurse calls me and says, you know, I really think he's got strep, I think he should be checked, we have the ability to do it here. It would be like going to urgent care, wouldn't it? So I could bring my insurance to you and say, and then if I had to go back to my own pediatrician, I could do it.
Absolutely, yes. You can have a pediatrician, you can have a provider in your life already, and use this full base for.
We don't, parents don't have to give up that to be able to access.
Not at all. It's an excellent, excellent question. Not at all. We can be a supplement, or we can become the primary care provider because there grows such a relationship there, or there isn't one, because primary care is hard to find.
It's so hard to find.
And so, yes.
So even if you have one, it's hard to get an appointment.
Absolutely. So excellent, excellent question. So continuity care, the regular primary care provider in your life, or episodic and same-day. And we also, our nurse practitioners, our staff, will communicate, if you will, with that primary care provider or pediatrician of record, to make sure that they understand, they were seen here today, this is what the conclusion was.
Great.
Yes, absolutely.
A great model, thank you. I'm very excited about it.
I have a quick question. So the impetus for this, is it mostly, was it like in Taunton, perhaps because a lot of families didn't have a primary care, you know, someone to take care of them outside of the school? Was that like, is that one of the reasons why you put this in place in Taunton, for an example?
It's an excellent question, and I think the Taunton School community would also credit the nurses and the school nurses, and the nurses, if you will, needing something more. I think the Taunton School leadership and school committee recognizing that, yes, healthcare access is hard, but also wanting to create, if you will, an opportunity to keep kids in school, to reduce the incidence and prevalence of, if you will, diseases and help to manage conditions that would keep and retain students in the classroom, if you will, and keep them healthy and well, yes.
Right. But was it mostly an economic issue? I mean, is that, was that part of the reason why they needed it in Taunton? I'm just thinking for us, which I, you know, I think it's great, and I love Mrs. Lebo's analysis, are equating it to be an urgent care kind of facility when you can't get into a pediatrician or someone to get tested. So how it's going to look, if I'm listening correctly, is we're going to have the facility here down the street where the parking is there. Here at the high school, these students here can go in the middle of the day. They're not feeling well, they call the nurse, they bring them down. The rest of the kids in the Quincy Public School system are going to have that access. They have the ability to use it, right? They can come from wherever they are, whatever school they might be at, but it's not something like in the day, they're going to be able to just come down and take advantage of the facility.
I'd like to say that's something that the planning committee could work on together. You know, we could all work on that, because our goal is to have access during the school day for all of the students.
Which is, and that can be a conversation for you guys down the road, I guess, you know, and the logistics of how to make that work. Because I think to Mrs. Perdiós's point before, if you have a student at another school, like how do we get them here, and what, you know, what's the process going to be there? I don't want to keep everyone, but it sounds like, I'm sure you guys are all going to, you know, shake out all the pieces and figure out how to make it work best for us. And I think the most important piece is making sure that kids that don't have access to healthcare, that's what I, the way I'm looking at it, is families that don't have access during the school day or have a pediatrician or someone to be able to take care of them, that we will be giving them the opportunity to do that here.
And if I could add too, and parents too, that need to stay at work, I mean, that is some of the greatest compliments and feedback that we receive, that it's very difficult for me to leave work, and if the children can be seen, it allows the parents to be able to stay in work and have that assurance that everything's okay.
But most of the time, I mean, it's going, I think that the nurses now, and from, you know, I feel as though if a kid doesn't feel well, they go down, they see the nurse, they're assessed by the nurse, and if it's something that they feel they need to go home, then they'll go on their way, you know, call parents or whoever it might be, guardians. In this sense, if a student goes to the clinic, and like you said, you want to keep them in school, but if it's something that needs more care, you know, antibiotics, they need more rest, they have a fever, they were going to have to send them home anyway, you know?
Yeah, in that case, they'd go home.
Right.
But, you know, in the case of a child where, like, we don't have the ability to test, let's go back to strep, and we send them to the clinic, and they say, you know, they're, they test negative, they don't have it, we can get them back into school.
Send them home.
And, you know, if the parent says, well, I'm just going to pick them up anyways, that's their choice, but this is going to save them from leaving work, getting a negative test, and.
And then being fine. And then being fine. Okay. All right, thank you. I don't want to keep you.
Just a couple of things. So the impetus down in Taunton, and talking with the superintendent Cabral in Taunton, who's, by the way, an amazing superintendent and a huge resource for us, and a great partner for us, but certainly for him, chronic absenteeism, which I know is an issue across the state, but certainly for him in Taunton, this was definitely a big piece of the overall plan, like it would be in Quincy, to combat chronic absenteeism by making healthcare more accessible to students and families, to make sure that they're getting the necessary care so that the students and families are doing well. Not just the student, but if the family is not doing well and sick and not being properly treated, the illness can continue and continue. This way, when they opened in Taunton, again, it was a huge chronic absenteeism initiative in Taunton, just as we have here, as it is across the state, but this was a huge partnership for that superintendent in combating that chronic absenteeism piece. The other piece is, we are, just as Taunton, we do want to make sure that our students, not only at Quincy High, but across the district, have access to the health clinic. So obviously, we would depend on parents, in many cases, to actually take their student there from the school to there, but we also felt it was extremely important to make sure wherever we located the clinic was public transportation accessible, which I know would be difficult with a sick child, but it's an opportunity for families to reach a location, a healthcare location, which they may not normally be able to reach. So just that public transportation piece was critical for us as well, as it was for Taunton. So those are just two pieces I want to touch on to make it a little more clear.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda. Next, we have the Quincy Public School FY 2026 budget. Superintendent Wobley.
Good evening again, everyone. The budget presentation was given to you over the last couple of meetings. A public hearing was held and completed. We have approval of the city council. The next step in the budget process is to have the school committee approve the FY 2026 budget, so we would need a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a roll call vote.
So, yes, I think, I think we've done a great job with the kind of resources we're at compared to other districts, certainly. And it's a lean budget, but it still maintains a lot of the services we have, which I'm proud of. I still am very concerned that it doesn't include any funds in there for Chromebooks, for replacement Chromebooks. All of our students have one, and they're getting to be about five, six years old now. So I'm foreseeing that going to be a big expense, and I'm still hopeful in that we're going to find another funding source for that. That'd be great. But otherwise, I'm comfortable with the budget. It's just, that's my lingering concern on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. With, on the Chromebooks, we are seeking some capital funds for that through the capital fund, so we'll hopefully have some positive news on that moving forward.
Excellent.
We're working on that.
Thank you.
With the mayor's office.
Appreciate that.
Roll call, also. So we had a motion in a second? Okay, thank you. Mr. Vogoly, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, which requires a roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
All set. Roll call.
Mr. Vogoly, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional business, non-communications, next school committee meetings will be on September 10th and September 24th, 2025. Reports of subcommittees, teaching and learning, Mrs. Lebo to report on the May 28th, 2025 meeting.
Thank you. On the May 28th, we heard from Mrs. Wojcik and the family liaisons in the language access plan, and how we worked it in Quincy Public Schools. We have over 70 home languages that are spoken at home. We use School Messenger for translation services. We also use the SmoR platform, and we have call and interpreters too. And the family liaisons reach out to every new student, the welcome pack, the school calendar, LPAC information, Aspen tutorials, Aspen tutorials, and basic information about English. Education academies are offered, parent academies are offered annually, and the families are surveyed every year to see how the services are going. The next item on the agenda was the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Grant. Under the grant, we actually have received $250,000 for fiscal year 2025, with the possibility of additional funding, $500,000 for 2026. We are working in conjunction with the Hail Family Y, QCAP, Head Start, Campus Kinterhaus, Quincy After School Childcare, Wallison Childcare Center, and the STAS program. The top challenges for families have been the cost of childcare, the schedule, because we don't have six-hour days, and the waiting lists. The grant is allowing us, it has three main priorities. It's allowing us to place these preschools, full-time preschools in our community partnerships, and the priorities are access to quality preschool, full day, align quality, implementation of common curriculum and assessments, and in program innovation. And so, they are piling stuff now in the schools, and they'll be getting back to us to see how that is working out, and the full report is posted on the website.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Koch?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Before I make the motion to go into executive session, I think I speak on behalf of all of my colleagues, just to take a minute. We're ending the school year very soon, and I want to thank the superintendent, the team, entire leadership team, our principals, our teachers, our administrators, our staff, our coaches, our guidance counselors, nurses, traffic supervisors, bus drivers, custodians, security, everybody that comes together to provide a wonderful, safe, learning environment for our kids. So to all of those out there who work so hard during the course of the year, we thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the caveat, we will not be returning to regular session.
So moved. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. See you in September.